We've had our SVPs for this town hall of well over 1,000. We've got 660 people on chat, so I know this is of great interest. We appreciate you taking the time. The purpose of this call is to share updates on restart planning from some key areas in anticipation of an eventual lifting of the governor's order, stay at home order, which I understand is still, you know, maybe pushed back, but as of right now it's May 29th, where people could potentially return to work. And we know there are a lot of questions out there, so President Wilson is going to begin this, and he will be followed by Lori Claybo, Dean of Health and Nursing, who also chairs the subcommittee for the Public Health Subcommittee for the Restart Committee. That will be followed by Rob Davenport, our AVP for Facilities Planning and Management. And I know there are lots of questions about our facilities. And then finally, from Carolyn Hefner, because HR has been very deep in far as figuring out how do we work at home and all the rest. We also have on this call a number of other subcommittee chairs, and we'll have people address you in the order that I mentioned, but then we'll have time, a good amount of time, I believe, for Q and A. We've had roughly 150 questions submitted. Many of them are similar to each other. They fall into a few categories, and those have been shared with everybody. But we'll also be taking questions from the audience, and they'll be fed to me, and I'll moderate the Q and A afterwards. But first, I'd like to, we'd like to start with President Wilson. I think we're fortunate to have a medical doctor and an epidemiologist as our leader during this uncertain time. So, and President's also been named to a couple of the governor's task forces and other things as well, the Recanomic Restart Task Force and our Health Disparities Task Force. President Wilson, if I could turn it over to you to give an overview?
Thank you, Michael. Well, good afternoon, everyone. It certainly has been a very difficult time. I do appreciate the effort everybody's been making in terms of continuing to get the mission of the university accomplished and continuing to practice safe, safety as a top, top priority. Appreciate that. This is the second restart town hall that we've had. The Provost had one, I think it was May 11th, and it was very well received. It was obvious that a lot of people had an interest in what was going on and was hungering for further knowledge. And although he did actually a fabulous job in answering all the questions that he could, some of the questions really more appropriately was in the purview of some of the other committees that we have. And so we thought that, well, maybe we should have another restart meeting like this in which all of the subcommittee chairs could participate, so that if there are certain questions that just one person may not have the answers to, or at least the details answers to, you have the person in charge of that area being able to answer the questions. So, you know, one of the major things that people are always asking is, you know, what's going to happen in the fall? We prefer to think about this in two phases. As Michael mentioned, the first phase is really what's going to happen on May 29th? Because on the 28th, the governor is expected to lift at least some of her directives related to stay at home. And so people want to know, you know, what's actually going to happen on May 29th? Do you come in? Do you not come in? Those kinds of questions. So we try to focus a bit on that. Phase two is obviously what happens for the fall semester. And to say from the very beginning that we don't have all the answers to that yet. When you really think about it, that's three months away. And I always try to remind people that three months ago, you know, was a very different situation here. We didn't even have our first case of COVID-19 infection. In fact, Michiganers were continuing, were gathering in very large gatherings, and people were looking at me all funny when I would not want to shake hands and would suggest that we elbow bump instead. That was two and a half months ago. So a lot can change in three months. And so we want to really be guided by the science, guided by the public health realities at that time, and we try to answer as many questions as we can, but just understand that we don't have all the answers for phase two yet. We've always been guided by four principles. The safety of our campuses is number one. It's number one priority, hands down. We want to continue the mission of the university. Just because we're working differently and we're teaching differently and we're learning differently doesn't mean the university is closed. The university is open, and, you know, we will continue the mission of the university. Third, we've learned a lot, and so we want to continue to learn and adapt based on our experiences so far and do things better as we move forward. And then finally, this is no one's fault. This is a natural catastrophe. And so we want to, to the extent possible, we want people to be shielded as much as possible from financial difficulties. And so those have been the principles that we've been guided by. There's been nine subcommittees that's looking at various aspects of what's required for restarting. So it's very, very comprehensive. It's, I would say, it's one of the more comprehensive efforts in the country in terms of number of people involved in this, in this effort and the kind of issues that we're looking at. Although, although you hear from three of the subcommittee chairs, as was mentioned, most of the subcommittee chairs are on this call, so you can answer, you can ask whatever questions you would like to, and we'll see if we can get someone to, to answer. Some guidelines on phase one. As I mentioned, you know, we don't have all the answers particularly for phase two, but there are some guidance that we can provide for phase one. The first is that regardless of what the governor's order may be on May 28th, first of all, we don't really know exactly what she's going to say. It is her stay at home directive is set to expire, but it's likely that she may keep some restrictions in place, who knows? But regardless of what the details are, we can be more restrictive than what the governor directs. So we're going to ask people to, if you can continue to work at home, continue working at home, regardless of what the governor's directive is. We can't be more lenient than the governor, but we can certainly be more restrictive. If you need to go to your offices, you know, clear this with your supervisors, keep to yourself as much as possible, continue to practice safe distancing and follow all of the guidelines. These general guidelines cover expectations not only for yourself, but for anyone who visits our campus. That's, we have an open campus. It's very important that we make sure that everybody follows the guidelines because it's to protect, you know, everyone else. And then finally, you know, we really need everyone to follow the guidelines. I'm reminded when we went to a smoke-free campus, it was, you know, somewhat successful, but not totally successful, partly because in order to achieve smoke-free required a lot of peer monitoring, and people felt uncomfortable telling someone else that they shouldn't smoke. Well, this is different. It's not just a nuisance. I mean, this is, you know, people's lives at stake. And so we urge you to, not only by, by the guidelines yourself, but exert peer pressure on those who are not following the guidelines, because it's for everyone's benefit, and it's important, if this is going to succeed, for everyone to be following the guidelines that you're going to be receiving. And just remember, warrior safe is warrior strong. And with that, I'm going to turn this over to one of our chairs, Lori Lazon Claybo, who has been chairing the Public Health Subcommittee. And this is a very interesting committee, because it's offered support to all of the other subcommittees. This is the committee that's made up of the experts, the public health, infectious disease, other content experts in this whole area. We've been depending on them a lot for the most current information, not only nationally, but what's happening locally, and they've been a great resource for us. So with that, Dean Claybo?
Thank you. As President Wilson described, the role of the Public Health Subcommittee is to inform the recommendations for each of the other subcommittees, to ensure that they're grounded in emerging science and best practice. The challenge, as you can imagine, is that the evidence is developing at a pretty rapid pace as new knowledge is generated. But the good news is we're not doing this alone, and that in addition to the professional literature, the faculty infectious disease experts we have on our committee, who have access to extensive local and national data, we also have the guidelines from the CDC, and we have access to very useful recommendations from organizations like the American College Health Association. And our plans have to be able to adapt to changing circumstances and to new developments. Key work underway in the committee includes a few things, and I'll mention a few of those now. First, we're finalizing the development of two education modules that will be completed by all members of the campus community before return. The modules will go live on Canvas with a link from the WSU coronavirus webpage sometime next week, and we'll send out an announcement when they're ready to go. The modules include basic information on COVID-19 and its transmission, as well as new campus-based strategies to promote a safe environment. These strategies include things like specific guidance on wearing a face covering at all times in public spaces on campus, how to care for your face covering. We've received a lot of questions about people with no symptoms spreading the virus. Universal use of face coverings in public is currently considered the best way to reduce asymptomatic spread. The modules will also include information about hand hygiene, reducing or eliminating the use of common shareables like common pens, paper sign-in sheets, things like social distancing, including strategies for the use of elevators and restrooms, directional use of hallways and stairwells in some settings, and temporary closure of many waiting areas, conference rooms, and large public spaces. But another very important strategy is our ability to conduct an ongoing assessment of the overall health of the campus. In the next several days, the Employee Daily Screening Procedure, which has been used by critical infrastructure workers as part of the executive order, will transition to a new iteration called the Campus Daily Screener, which will be completed by all members of the community who wish to be physically present on campus every day. This is very important for two reasons. First, it will tell you if you're cleared to come to campus that day, and if not, it will generate a report to your supervisor and to the Campus Health Center. The Health Center staff are trained contact tracers who will conduct further screening and make recommendations for testing and quarantine as medically indicated, as well as notifying those who may have been exposed and notifying facilities regarding cleaning and mitigation. Also, equally importantly, aggregate data from all the screens will allow us to assess the ongoing status of the campus on a regular basis. We'll be able to identify clusters or potential spread before they might otherwise become evident, and the Public Health Committee will be able to make recommendations regarding loosening or tightening of restrictions based on real-time data. Daily screening and data monitoring are identified as one of the most important strategies towards moving to a safe opening by the ACHA. There's lots more to come, but it's important that we emphasize two things. First, the restart will be phased based in emerging science and guided by real-time data. The lifting of the stay-at-home does not mean we all rush back to campus. We should gradually increase our footprint, as data demonstrates that it's safe to do so. We have access to the local infectious disease experts on our committee, and that expertise, combined with local and national evidence, will guide campus actions. Next, protecting the health of the campus community is a shared responsibility. Until such time as an effective vaccine is developed and widely available, or effective prophylactic treatment is discovered, physical distancing, responsible testing, isolation, quarantine, and systematic contact tracing are our best strategies to promote the health of our community, and the health of the campus community is our highest priority. And now we turn to Rob Davenport, who'll provide more detailed information regarding facilities.
Thank you, Dean Claybo, and good afternoon, everybody. So Facilities Restart Subcommittee is drafting a playbook for all facilities-related segments, including custodial services, HVAC air management, space management, parking, transportation, and construction services. The playbook is based on industry standards and governmental regulatory requirements, including the new COVID-19 OSHA standard, CDC standards, ASHRAE standards, and finally, the governor's recent executive order, number 202091, which addresses safeguards to protect Michigan workers. Now, since custodial services are top of mind, I'd like to hover on a few action items that FPNM is tracking. First, training custodians. We are engaged in pandemic preventative maintenance cleaning and post-case discovery cleaning training. Now, this training addresses specific tasks associated with pandemic cleaning processes. Everybody's engaged in this training program, and we expect to get this completed within the next week or so. We're protecting entrances and exits by utilizing a product known as Nanoceptic. This application is applied to doors, door handles, and electronic buttons, primarily elevator and building access control type buttons. In the common area cleaning and building scenarios, we are addressing high-traffic and touchpoint cleaning to include doors and handrails. On the classroom side of the business, now this is still under development, but we are defining classroom cleaning plans based on occupancy rates, class schedules, frequency of cleaning, and of course, procuring available labor to, to cover these schedules. On the surface cleaning side, we have identified an EPA-approved disinfectant that's being utilized throughout campus. You know, we expect this to be a bit of a shared responsibility with regard to surface cleaning, and so we are determining the location of spray bottles around campus to make sure we've got those resources available for that purpose. Finally, we're considering disinfectant wipes to be available in strategic locations as well. As you may know, procuring these products is difficult, but we have a viable and perhaps even reliable supplier in that effort. On the restroom side, we're disinfecting equipment and fixtures, stall doors, toilet valve handles, sink faucet handles, soap dispensers, paper towel dispensers. We're also establishing new cleaning frequencies in these areas. And finally, looking into touchless restroom fixtures and equipment where applicable and practical. Regarding sanitizing equipment, we've got hand sanitizer located in specific, at specific entrance points across campus. And also, we have ordered two Clorox 360 electrostatic fogging devices, and these will be used to perform broad-spectrum disinfecting of, of spaces and rooms, et cetera. Finally, our planning and space management team is working with the other subcommittees, faculty, et cetera, to fit test classrooms and other common areas to identify the best means of social distancing. So I'll pause here and introduce Carolyn Hefner.
Thank you, Rob, and thank you, President Wilson, for the opportunity to speak to the campus community today. I am leading the HR Restart Committee with a very large cross-section committee with representatives from faculty, staff, and our union representatives, both on the non-academic as well as the academic side. And we are all working very hard to support the development of a phased-in restart plan to very gradually, as Dean Claybo said, and again, in support of what President Wilson has said, limited access on campus. We really support working remotely throughout the summer while we're working on our restart plans. You know, as we began to really develop our strategies and the logistics with the direction from our Public Health Committee and our Facilities Committee, there's a lot of work to be done. And our first and foremost concern is making sure that everyone is health and safe on this campus. And so our goal is to continue to support that. We have a lot of work that we're doing. We have about nine work groups, but I really want to focus on the work of four today. The first is, I think, a topic that is on everyone's mind, which is continuing to work remotely. And so there is a lot of guidance on our website currently about flexible work arrangements, but we are looking to formalize that into policy and reviewing all of our other administrative policies and procedures to see what adjustments and modifications we can make for those to adjust to our new remote work environment. We are also, will be issuing some surveys that will go out to leaders and to staff to help to inform changes to what we've put out as guidance. And so you can expect to see those surveys coming out in the next couple of days. And I really encourage everyone to please take the time to fill out those surveys, because your comments on how you've been working remotely really are very important to us, will help us to, to form and make revisions and policies and procedures where needed. The second area that we're working on is training. In addition to the training that Dean Claybo has mentioned, we're collaborating not only with her committee, but with Facilities and other work groups within the broader restart committee structure, to develop training, e-learning on Canvas and Accelerate to help to manage remote teams, to work effectively remotely, and provide all kinds of coaching and support to work now in this new environment. And I'm real excited about what that team is doing to help to make this a very smooth but engaging transition to our new normal. The third area has to do with health and safety. This committee is working very closely with faculty from nursing and social work, as well as other internal and external partners in the development of all kinds of webinars and virtual training to provide information, support, and guidance with respect to financial, physical, and mental health and wellness. This pandemic has changed the world. We know that. And we've been dealing with a lot of things, fears, anxiety, grief, isolation, concerns on a wide spectrum of issues, and we are sensitive to that. And we want to make sure that in addition to promoting how we get work done, but we get it done with everybody in the best possible frame of mind. And so there's webinars, and again, mobile apps, and all kinds of great tools that will be rolled out in upcoming wellness calendar. And then the fourth area has to do with communications, because we know it's critical that you know what's going on and what we're doing, and so that we can help to ease your concerns about what's, what's your area going to look like when you come back. And so there are a lot of information will be coming out. You can look to the coronavirus website, you can look to Today at Wayne, and a lot of other messaging avenues. But I also want to speak to, we are collaborating very closely with the Office of Internal Audit and the Office of Research Integrity, because we recognize that there will be concerns, there may be issues. We want to offer folks the opportunity to file complaints, and you can do that through askhr@wayne.edu. You can do it at internalaudit.wayne.edu, and you can communicate directly either with union reps. But we also want you to know that when those complaints come in, they will be addressed, and they will be addressed consistently and expeditiously. And so we want you to know that you have those opportunities. So there's a whole lot of other work going on. Thank you again for working so hard remotely and adjusting to a new normal, and stay tuned. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Michael Wright for questions and answers.
Thank you, Carolyn, and thank you, everybody, for, for those presentations. We, we are now up to nearly 2,000 people viewing this, so we've got a whole lot of interest. I'll, some of the questions sound like they've been answered, but some I think might, might be good to answer again. And one of the ones that President Wilson, you talked about before, and this may be for you or for the Provost, who I know is in the, in the waiting room. Will classes be face-to-face or online in the fall? And I know you've kind of answered that, but they want to know when a decision might be made.
Yeah, so the, the most likely scenario is that there'll be a combination of person-to-person as well as remote or online. The real question is what proportion will be face-to-face and what proportion will be remote or online? That's a question we can't answer at this point right now, because we want to, we don't see a, a real need to make a decision as soon as possible. It's more important to make the right decision, because it is, it is such an important one, to make the right decision based on the science and the public health. At the same time, we recognize that people have to plan, and a decision has to be made well before the semester starts. So we were, I was talking to the Provost about this, and we think we probably need to make a decision really by mid- fall in order to have the, the appropriate planning time by, you know, mid-August or so when we start classes. Keith, you want to add to that?
No, I think you've covered it very well, President. I think one of the things hopefully that you'll be seeing soon out of the Academic Restart Committee is some suggestions about how, to figure out how to establish that. We have no specific guidelines of 10%, 50%, 100% are supposed to be remote versus others. We want, really want to make it something that integrates actually with Rob Davenport's group and with Carolyn Hefner's group in terms of the facilities and what's capable for folks, as well as Lori's group in terms of looking at, maybe there's some classes that it's just easier to be able to do it safely than compared to other classes. Laboratories and performing arts sorts of classes are ones that have typically needed to have more in-person, you know, a person-to-person sorts of interactions. And so we're, we're trying to provide some guidelines and some suggestions for conversations to be made about how to actually do that, and so that it's going to vary across this great university that we have, so we'll see.
Thank you. There, there have been a lot of questions, and they were sort of covered about working from home. And even when this is all over, there have been people, we have now discovered that a lot of people can work very effectively from home. Will there be opportunities to continue doing that, both when the order is lifted, but also beyond that?
Well, I'll take that one, Michael. And absolutely, we are encouraging remote work. You know, the, the one thing that this pandemic has taught us is we can be warrior strong on and off campus and still keep operations moving smoothly and effectively. In fact, what we have heard so far is that many people have been more productive working from home, and we hope that that continues. We are working on a return-to-work guide and a leader's checklist, so that leaders can specifically make decisions about who should be on campus when we are able to come back on campus by, by deciding what work absolutely needs to be done on campus. And if, and if that work can continue to be done effectively and efficiently remotely, we're going to encourage that.
Okay, thank you very much. Lori, we've had a couple of questions coming in that might be good for you. One is, is will there be availability of PPE or face coverings from the university? And also, will, will people be required to be And also, will people be required to be tested prior to returning to campus?
Thanks, Michael. Those are great questions. The university has currently ordered a supply of reusable cloth face coverings. The current order includes three per faculty or staff member, and we know that they are in development but have not yet arrived, but there is a supply on campus available. And we would encourage that everyone who is, obviously the critical infrastructure workers, have been wearing them. We ask that everyone who steps foot on the Wayne State campus wears a cloth face covering at a minimum, and that, again, if you don't have one available to you, that you consult your supervisor about how we can get one to you before you choose to return to campus. There is also an order being developed from the dean's students' office to make sure that our students are supplied with cloth face coverings for return to campus. And the second question, Michael, was...
Both PPE and whether people needed to be tested.
Oh, testing. So currently, the testing strategies nationally, as you know, are developing as the science develops. The current recommendations are that people be, everyone who is going to live in congregate housing, so for us, that's the dorms, be tested prior to return to campus, and that everyone, obviously, who is symptomatic, who hits a positive on the daily screener, be tested. We also have a recommendation from our public health experts that we do a random sample antibody testing, which will give us an answer about seroprevalence of the disease on campus, not yet a good scientific indicator of diagnosis, and not yet a reliable indicator of immunity. We don't know how much immunity or how long, but we expect that over the course of the summer, those testing strategies, the testing modalities will be a little more rigorous and therefore, testing strategy is a little better informed. So what I would say is, we know for sure, if you're moving onto campus, you will be tested before you move in, and anyone who is symptomatic will have a test. And the remainder of our testing strategy will adapt as new evidence emerges.
Thank you very much. Dean Claboe, if you don't mind, one more, that may be the public health is helping guide. Will we let people know about confirmed cases of COVID?
That's a really good question, and a lot of people have asked us about this over the last number of weeks. As you can imagine, there's a balance between wanting to make sure that certainly everyone who's been in contact with someone who is either suspected or diagnosed will be contacted by our contact tracing process. So that will happen automatically. In terms of posting to a public website, I think we have to balance wanting to make sure that people know the incidence of the disease on campus versus protecting individual privacy. So we're not going to recommend posting identifying information or identifiable information, but we do believe that the campus community should have access to transparent aggregate data that will allow us to make decisions about further action.
Thank you. And in the website, wayne.edu/coronavirus, which is now more about the restart, when we first put that site up, it did notify people, also protecting privacy, that there were cases on campus. So that's more transparent. This one, perhaps for Rebecca and the president, are we considering, with the financial situation, are we considering furloughs or layoffs?
President Wilson, would you like me to respond to that?
Yeah, go ahead, and I'll add to it if necessary.
Okay. I guess I would answer that by saying we are considering all options. Right now, we are not making any definite decisions about that, partially because there are a lot of unknowns in our financial future. We don't know what's going to happen with the state subsidies that we receive. We don't know what's going to happen with enrollment and with tuition next year. And so until we have more information, I think it would be premature to do anything as significant as furloughs or layoffs. I do want to differentiate between those two terms. We are using furloughs to describe a temporary absence from work where you would not get paid. A layoff would be a more permanent action where you would no longer be an employee of the university. And obviously, those are actions that we are trying to avoid, partially because they have a significant financial damage to the people who are subjected to them. But we also need to preserve the university and make sure that we're here in the future to continue to teach and do research. So it's a very difficult, decisions will need to be made, but we're not making them yet. We're investigating options but not making decisions.
Yeah, I think the only thing I would add to that is that certainly, as was already mentioned, there are a lot of variables. The enrollment is one, what happens with the state appropriations is another. I'd know the state is experiencing their own financial difficulties. However, to be perfectly transparent, because I don't want anybody to say, well, there was a town hall and we were told this. To be perfectly transparent, you know, I cannot see a scenario unless, the very, very best scenario, where we wouldn't have to do something to deal with the financial consequences of this coronavirus. All universities are going to be damaged to a certain extent, some more than others. We're a bit lucky in the sense that we don't own a hospital, and we don't get a lot of revenue from our athletics, so we don't have a lot of expenses related to athletics. So we're a bit shielded from that. And by the way, we don't own our own housing anymore. We have a private partnership with that. Having said that, almost all the scenarios show some level of furloughs and/or layoffs may be necessary, but we want to be very clear to not make these type decisions. These are very big decisions. Not make these decisions until we absolutely have to when the financial picture is a lot clear. Another advantage we have is that most universities have a fiscal year that ends end of June. Our fiscal year ends end of September, so we have a little bit more time to develop our budget without making some decisions until we have a clearer picture of the total finances.
Related to this, and this may be for Provost Whitfield or President Wilson, but what does the enrollment situation look like right now?
Provost?
He's throwing that to me because I am the forever optimist in this group. Right now, our enrollment actually is ahead of pace of what it's been in the previous years. But it's a very volatile situation that you have to be careful of and not put too much stock in what we see at this point in time. In a normal year, we'd say, yeah, we feel pretty good about it. But the way that incidents and the progression of this may change, the complications with the kinds of restrictions that we may be under, people may make different decisions about what they want to do about coming to school. We are such an excellent option and opportunity for folks. I'm hoping that the increase that we see right now actually will hold, and that we get an opportunity to actually provide the kind of education that we can, that in some ways only Wayne State can in this area. But some of the other factors are people are thinking about staying closer to home, and Detroit being really the population center for the state. It makes sense that we're seeing an uptick. But I also think it's because of some of the great programs that have been started in the last few years that are actually really great attractors to being able to come here. Last year, we had the second highest freshman enrollment, and the year before, we had the highest enrollment. So in some ways, maybe we're capitalizing on people are actually understanding the great value that is having a Wayne State education. So let's, everybody think positively that it's going to hold and that we're going to because that will provide us with some support in dealing with our financial situation.
Let me just say that that's the most guarded, I've heard the provost talk about that, enrollment.
Unless you had something else to add, Provost Whitfield, if you could just stay on there, because we did have some inquiries about the timing of the semester. I think it's related to the Notre Dame announcement, and should we think about going online after Thanksgiving or starting later in the fall or things like that?
Yeah. We've got a fantastic registrar in Kurt Krasinski, who has been modeling what the implications would be. There is so much that goes into it. Our Academic Restart Committee was paging over at least three different scenarios today, and the one that we're looking at the most closely because it won't affect our accreditation, it won't affect things that we struggle with in terms of timing, because there are just some particular things about timing in terms of trying to start early, is to look and do what, and consider what a lot of universities are thinking about, which is that looking at Thanksgiving and saying, you know, that's a time when everybody kind of goes back home, and they may actually increase the risk of bringing people back on the campus, of thinking that maybe at Thanksgiving time, we don't come back. We only have about a two-week period of time where there's classes, and then another week that is of final exams. And so that might be a time that works to be able to try to make sure that we keep our campus community as healthy and safe as possible. But we're looking at the other implications for that. So just understand that we are looking at that as one possible opportunity because we think that there are some options there, as well as that you're seeing a lot of schools think about doing that. That has to be put together with the kind and the amount of remote instruction that we're doing or already doing, and to see what that looks like in terms of risk profile, if we were to pull people back or bring them back after that Thanksgiving period. But we will do our best to communicate as frequently and often as possible as those plans become more solid.
Thank you very much. We've had a couple of questions from the online audience about student services and whether or not those will be reimbursed based on the fact that a lot of folks are going to be online.
And so we'll be looking to do the same thing that we did when this first started, and particularly for the times during spring/summer. And that is for courses that require you to use materials in a classroom setting, whether it be a beaker or sulfur or something like that. Those are fees that we'll make sure that students don't have to pay for. But there are, in terms of, there are certain fees that go along with being able to offer instruction, and so those will have to be in place. But know that we look at them constantly. We actually work with chairs and faculty and departments to make sure that we don't assess any fee that would be for something that you would normally do when you were in person if we're in a remote situation. As the president noted, we're hoping that we'll have a mix of different sorts of classes. So there still may be those classes that are in-person classes, particularly laboratories, as well as some of our performance ones that actually do have fees that go along with them, because that's how we make that great instructional opportunity for people, is by those fees covering materials that are used in that instructional process.
Okay, stay right there because we're getting some questions that are right in your wheelhouse. Can faculty make decisions to hold classes online even if there are some face-to-face classes?
That's such an interesting question. That is what we've been spending probably the last week, being laser-focused on and trying to figure out, how do you establish that? We believe that maybe by the beginning of next week, middle of next week, if everybody have a happy Memorial Day, we'll be able to have some instructions for how to do that. We believe that the best way needs to be a cooperative discussion between chairs and deans with faculty about issues related to their risk, issues related to the type of instruction or the type of course that they have, and what instruction might be best for them. This, of course, is complicated in terms of relative to space issues. And so Rob Davenport and his group have been really helpful in us thinking about, you know, some of these classrooms that are fantastic classrooms, hold 250 people in a normal day. When you do proper spacing, can probably only hold about 70, 75. So it will have an impact on which courses we're able to offer, but when we don't offer all of our courses in person, it's going to offer some additional space as well. So there's going to be some great opportunities there. I don't think Darren Hubbard is on the line, but in terms of information technology, he's already looking at ways in which we can try to increase the technology that we have for some of our classrooms. So they'll be better able to provide us the opportunity to be able to do multiple classroom settings, maybe for one class, different ways in which we'll divide that up. But you're going to have some instructions forthcoming about how we can be able to establish that and work that out.
Okay, thanks. I'm glad you were on this call. Carolyn Hafner, we've had some questions about childcare issues and whether or not there's, you know, it's become, you know, folks are working there at home, they're with their children. If we come back, there'll be potentially childcare issues because the schools will remain closed. I know that some folks have been talking about that based on things I read online today, but do you have anything you can share with people about that particular issue?
We don't have a defined answer just yet, but as you said, we are looking at that, and we're working with a number of people to come up with some potential solutions. So I'm going to say at this point, please stay tuned and know that we are working on it.
Okay. I understand we've got some questions coming in about the School of Medicine, and I would ask those folks to, or just let you know that this is not the last of these types of communication, and I would expect the deans would be speaking to their schools and colleges about the specific issues faced by School of Medicine or any of our other 12 schools and colleges. Steve Lanier, I know you're in the waiting room, but we've had some questions about labs, getting back into working with labs, PhD students, you know, how are we doing as far as the planning of restarting labs and research? I think you're muted, Steve.
We have a pretty large group that's been working on that for five or six weeks now, and the vice deans of research from multiple research-intensive colleges, and there's a plan that was posted May 11th on the website, for those of you that haven't had a chance to see that. And the plan is really a phased plan that is focused initially on onsite activities, lab-based activities that can't be conducted remotely, consistent with the earlier messages that you've heard here. If you're enabled remote, stay remote as we go forward into the next phase. And so in that context and consistent with national guidelines and what we're trying to do across the three research universities in the state, we're targeting, starting off with 25, 30% of the level of activity pre-COVID in any given building at any given time. So all the labs and departments and colleges with activity in that sector have been developing plans, how to implement that, that would maintain social distancing, single point of entry that's based on daily completion of the health survey that Dean Claboe had mentioned. So all the teams are assembled around that. We have signage that we have currently got some this afternoon to post in the facilities thanks to communication. We have, we actually have 10,000 face masks, cloth masks, that we'll be providing to investigators and teams as they come on site that will be there as the other ones come onboard. And so the idea is that in the different colleges, we're going to start off in a slow way, if you will, to make sure we do it right. I mentioned the 25%, but even in the context of individual colleges, to try and start with one building and get that operational, that's where the plans are really tight, and then to learn from that and go with the next one. So each of the different vice deans for research are coordinating with their own internal working team to target that, and I hope clarity on that over the next few days. Everybody coming on track would be required to take the training module that Dean Claboe mentioned. We also anticipate that the additional training platforms through entities like City Module, et cetera, are coming into play. We are not allowing undergraduate researchers to come back in as part of this phased ramp-up. Trainees, graduate students will come in, but they have to go through a development plan. Trainees, graduate students will come in, but they have to go through a development plan and go through the part of that training procedure, et cetera. Each of the labs have a standard operating procedure for cleaning twice daily. That includes a disinfectant that Rob mentioned. In addition, we have wipes that we should have next week, which are E.P. approved wipes with touch points, services cleanings, shared instrumentation, et cetera, which we'll provide to investigators as they come on campus. So all of that is coming into place relative to students and staff. You know, if you don't feel comfortable coming in, we want to be sure we have an environment where people don't feel pressured. And this has been top of the line, top of the discussion since the beginning. We don't want students or staff to feel that they're pressured to come in to complete this or not. So that's sort of built into the discussion and checks and balances around that, including the, I don't know if I'd call it hotline or vehicle to convey concerns mentioned by my colleague Carolyn earlier. So that's a general synopsis and you can look at the website almost every day to get a better update on them.
Rob Davenport, thank you, Steve. Rob, we had a couple of questions about air quality and in particular about the, the fogging that you mentioned. And how often would that occur and would that be in classrooms or, and how often will we do that?
So the fogging would, would be utilized if we have a, a known case. Then we would use that device to disinfect the room. Otherwise, we would, you know, continue to adhere to the basic plan of surface cleaning, whether it's with a disinfectant spray or, or wipes. So yeah, that, that's our plan with regard to the maintenance of the, of those matters and then reacting to an actual case.
Okay, thanks very much.
Sure.
I had a question about international and Canadian students, Canadians are international students. Are there any special considerations because they're having a harder time getting here or, or working from home country or anything like that? I think Provost Whitfield, that may be, I know Maud's working on that, but he's not on the, he's not in the chat room here.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. You know, it's very interesting. We've been trying to figure out lots of different strategies for making sure that our international students can actually engage with us. Maud Ezadine has been working closely with the schools and colleges, thinking of the ways in which. For some students, they may even be in a time zone where what they can do is be part of a class that might be done remote. There might be some online opportunities for those. And I really want to make that distinction between remote and online. Remote is at a scheduled time, it tends to be synchronous, and online is asynchronous. And, you know, we have over 400 courses in, in a given year that we actually offer online. And so we'll be doing some of those, so there'll be some opportunities. We're just trying to figure out ways in which we can try to support those students, because not being here in the United States actually has several restrictions in terms of the kinds of courses that we can offer them and, and how much they have to pay, whether that's in-state or out-of-state. We're thinking about all those ways that we can make sure that we try to support our international students as much as possible. There's, there's going to be some, just because in certain countries, the visa offices won't open until into the fall. And so those students might not be able to come. So we're even thinking about ways in which we can perhaps delay their entry back into either starting a graduate program or into a graduate program, for example. But all of these are, are being looked at. I encourage you to look at the Office of International Student Support, OISS, and they are very good about communicating the kinds of opportunities and support that are provided for our students.
Thank you very much. We've got time for one more question and I think the president's going to close it out and we'll have follow-up information if necessary. But Tim Michael, I, I hope you're still in, in the room. We've had a number of questions about housing. One, are there going to be refunds if, if we don't have housing? And two, just in general, are we going to have housing or is there anything different about how we're going to do it?
Thank you, yes, I'm here. I've been working with the group, looking at housing and dining and other retail services, campus services for the campus for fall. At this time, we, we are open, we are taking housing applications. We're on similar pace to last year. Students still seem interested and come and live with us. What we're doing is coordinating very closely with the, the Health Policy Committee to make sure that we can create an environment where students can be safe and feel safe. And, and then we want to make sure we communicate what that environment will be like. So students can then make, make choices about how they want to engage with campus housing. So yes, we, we will be open. We don't know the future. I think what you've heard on this call is we're trying to do a lot of planning around scenarios of what might happen as the semester unfolds. And so I, I'd like to believe we'll be as flexible and innovative as we were in the spring semester when we were, were really making decisions on a daily basis and we'll continue to do that. But planning's in progress and we're looking forward to welcoming students back to campus in August.
All right, thank you, Tim. I'm, I'm going to turn it over in a second to the president for any closing thoughts. We had a lot of questions, we had, you know, lots of questions. Thank you, everybody, for submitting them. We've tried to get to as many of them in as many categories as possible. I didn't expect on this call to get them, but we had questions about the recreational activities, rec center, the athletics and things like that. And I know, President Wilson, that, that's near to your heart. And, but we'll have other opportunities to talk about this. And I know Rob Thornier, who also chairs a subcommittee purely on athletics, is working closely with NCAA, et cetera, to figure out what our fall and then our, our athletics is going forward. I would just encourage everybody, we're going to be sharing more and more information in a number of channels. Go to wayne.edu/coronavirus, there's, that's where we're going to be keeping update, up to date on information. And we're, we'll just keep talking and there'll be more of these to come from, from various units. So President Wilson, would you like to close this out?
Sure, thank you, Michael. Certainly, we've covered a lot today. We weren't able to cover everything. Athletics was mentioned as one thing that is on people's minds, as well as whether the rec center is going to open, things like that. Let me just assure everyone that a lot of people are giving a lot of thought to all of these issues. If this was helpful to you, and I hope it was, we'll be happy to come back and do it again. We certainly would do it at least one more time later in the summer before the fall. But we're happy to do it as many times as you think it's helpful. So hopefully it was helpful and, you know, if there's a demand for it, we will certainly come back on again. The main message that I think I want to just leave everyone with is that as the new guidelines start coming out, for example, everybody has to wear a face mask if you're in an indoor building. We encourage everyone to comply with the new guidelines and to encourage everyone else to comply. You know, it's going to be a team effort and we're, we're all going to have to be in this together. So with that, thank you, Michael, for doing this and thank you to all the participants. And I, as I mentioned, I hope it was helpful and we're happy to do it again. Thank you all.